Scotty, will you do the summary check?
Yes.
We have some meeting minutes to approve. That's from our August twenty fifth, two thousand and fourteen, where we've already scheduled council meeting minutes. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if not, we'll go with a motion to approve.
They make a motion to approve the minutes?
Most of them are formed by Matt. Can you get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening, I think we have a couple additions to the agenda. Our first one is, we have a couple gambling permit requests for Holy Trinity. Kind of like to put that down, last item on the agenda. Underneath printer copier, not down under the treasure for ports of claims. And did we have anything else?
There's a total of three gambling permits.
There is a total of three.
Nothing else? I'll make a motion to approve it then.
Motion made to approve the agenda. Can you get a second?
I'd second the approval of the agenda.
Seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. First item we have on the agenda this evening is Four Seasons Shrimp Company. Welcome, fellas.
Hello, welcome, thank you.
How you doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, good. Well, let everybody know what Four Seasons Shrimp Company's gonna be all about.
Four Seasons Shrimp Company is gonna be business here, hopefully in years in industrial park. And we're involved growing saltwater shrimp, uh, at a facility there. And we're all gonna be retailing them out of that building. That's what kind of our plan is, based on.
Had a chance to meet with these gentlemen a little bit before the meeting started. Sounds like they have a really solid, solid plan and a great idea. I think it's gonna be a really neat endeavor and a really neat business to have in peers, so. Yeah, I don't know. Did you guys have any questions? Have you heard more details about what they plan on doing, or?
When you guys talk retail, are you gonna be retailing out of that facility?
Correct, yes.
Where the general public could come in and purchase or be retailing to wholesalers?
Well, in the future, we were hoping to do both, yes.
Okay.
I think the first thing that we need to touch on is the purpose of, of the company is they wanna bring it into peers. Potential of lots one and two, block two of the industrial park. That's what would fit the best for what they're looking for for, for land and opportunity to grow. So, once again, we're looking at lots one and two. It's on the corner of block two, straight south of Chris Voison.
And do they meet the, the requirements, you know, we set up the, kind of the criteria for getting those lots? We're looking at doing those the same as we have been talking about recently?
With the resources that would provide it to me from both Kevin and Joel, it fits, it fits the scenario very well. It definitely fits an industrial park for more intentions of what it's, purpose of industrial park.
Okay. And the dollar a lot, or is that, or is that?
That's still, um, they approached me with that and also a dollar a lot is still, I guess, what they're thinking, yes. Just because I, you know, we provided a number of other lots at that same price.
And then you have, we have that criteria set up as to having to have building up and running and all those kind of things?
Correct, but their intentions, once again, are to propose the building and those lots are available for them, that would fit them the best. From this point, if we approve, uh, that business going into that, those two lots, then I will go forward and put together a business development agreement along with the complaint fees and all the other paperwork that needs to be.
The retention agreement.
Correct.
So would they be building a building big enough for both lots or just one?
It would be more so, it's gonna be one building that's gonna sit on both lots.
Both lots, I mean.
That's what we have done.
Size, okay.
No, it'll be one building on one lot.
But, okay, but that was changed then, correct? Wasn't it gonna sit a certain way, but then you had to change it because of?
Yeah, we had to, we had to look it over and we actually had to change that.
Yeah, the sewer lines run there. We couldn't do that.
Yeah, so that's why, okay.
Yep, we can't go, we can't build over the sewer line.
The architect, what did I, yeah, architect told us, you can't build it the way you want it. He moved it to where he thought would be the best spot on the site.
Which way is the building gonna be sitting then?
It'll be sitting east and west now.
Okay, okay. So, my apologies, the, the intentions were north and south at first.
Right, at first, yes. But, yeah, the sewer lines changed that. The architect found that and then it was.
So it'll be in one lot.
What size building are you looking to put up back there?
It'd be a fifty by one twenty.
What, um, what enticed you or why the decision to cut from the industrial park? Was it the fact, is it the fact that, um, the lots would be waived with assessments? Or is it just because, is it because of location?
Carol Anderson proposed it to us. We were dealing with her and she's the one who mentioned it to us. And she met us up with Scott, so it came about that way.
Perfect, good.
So these gentlemen are looking at lot and block numbers, lot two, block two, and what's the other, lot one, lot two?
Lot one, lot one and lot two.
Block two and block two.
So I guess I would need a motion from the council to move forward with the lots, um, for these gentlemen and. What else do I have? I know I have something else for you guys too, that slipped my mind. But Four Seasons Shrimp Company are, or company, I guess, is what it is.
I think the intentions should be more so for me to move forward with our attorney and getting the proper paperwork in place.
Exactly.
Yes, so it'd be more so a verbal agreement rather than actually approving the lots until the paperwork is completed.
Right, we, yeah, we obviously have to get all the legal stuff.
Yeah, so I, I'm looking for approval to move forward with the paperwork and giving them the opportunity that they know that they have the lots so they can continue to move forward.
Very good. I need a motion on the floor.
I would make a motion that we go through the legal steps to acquire Four Seasons business in our industrial park.
Motion on the floor by Mike. Can you get a second?
I'd second that.
Seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Can I just add then that I would request that you two show up in the next council meeting, which will be, um, the
Twenty second.
Twenty second, so show up on the twenty second and we'll sign the paperwork, um, for completion.
Two weeks, I wish that could work for you guys.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'll put you first on the agenda, seven o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good luck with everything. I think it's gonna be a really, really neat thing for our city and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda was, we have some courses for fire department EMF and that is through Region Five. I believe those are in a free class. Um, did you forward that on to first response of fire staff?
No, I didn't.
No, no, I didn't. It was just recently sent to me, um, and I wanted to bring it to the council, so obviously there's street members on the fire department and. So I just wanted to bring this training forward to you and you could move forward from that one with it?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, uh, looks like a really neat deal.
Looks like they're driving courses.
Driving courses, classroom, um, that's all sorts of stuff. And this is all sponsored by NJPA?
Uh, Region Five is.
Okay, just Region Five horses.
The NJPA is something.
Yeah, drive-in courses that are available, looks like.
I see the one staple to it's got training information to prove, NJPA. Two completely different things.
This was just more of a normal. If it's something that you can use or.
This is something.
Why did that Brian and all bought?
Yeah, would you pass this on to Brian and, and your first response gets a, gets a copy of this?
I'll get it. Do the training now, is it? Yeah, I know. I was hoping you'd forget that.
Thank you for bringing that up, Scotty. Minnesota Power update.
The only update I have on that, um, obviously we're getting closer to the fall now. Dan Trapp did contact me and say that he, um, that Minnesota Power plans to be doing full inspections, um, the second or third weekend of September. So I just wanted to bring that up at a council meeting, um, let the public know that there's gonna be people going around maybe doing whole testing, potentially mapping, so, and things like that, so.
Uh, we have some training that I think Scotty wanted to go to, um.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Bill.
Uh, data privacy and open meeting law training.
That is, uh, in, it's a brochure and I just put copies for this, or of this training in your packets. I just wanted to bring that aware, um, bring you aware of that, of that, the data privacy and open meeting law. If you wanna attend that, the information is there. I plan to attend that. If there's any council that would like to come along, I'd be absolutely welcome.
No, I definitely think that's something you need to help.
If you do want, maybe you do plan this thing for a week or two and then. Pass that brochure.
Turn your headset, we'll look at your computer.
Call him this mic.
Scott brought up a point that we had dealt with here a few years ago and I think we need to reiterate it, but, we still have several houses, um, within town and maybe some multi-family housing in town that are lacking physical address numbers on their property. We're gonna start getting a list together, um, if any of the council members or Bobby or any of our staff is out there and you notice that a house does not have some type of physical address listed on the house. We need to make sure we get those folks a letter out. I mean, that is a, not only a safety issue, I mean, we're starting to talk some building and fire code issues as well, so I think it's important that people realize that for emergency response, can't find your house, we got a problem. So, um, it's important that they get those numbers on their homes.
Our house doesn't have a number on the house.
You are in violation of section one six.
It's on the mailbox, I'm.
That's what my next question was just gonna be, is it good enough on a mailbox?
As long as your property is identifiable. I mean, that, that's a more goal here, is to try and make your properties identifiable.
It should be on the home.
Well, they should, they should be, but, I mean, for now, if we can just get some type of identification on the houses.
We pay more than the house, but.
And sometimes a mailbox.
That's the important thing, we need to be able to.
We do. Uh, and if you look in your packet, we actually, um, Anna, I don't know how, how long ago sent out a letter like this.
It's been, it's been a few years.
It's been a few years. And this is what I dug up and found and I just wanted to kinda give a, this is what was sent out, but, you know, one thing too that we, you know, depending on the cost of it, I thought, this is what we sent out for dog license, um, to get your dog license renewed. Um, it was fairly inexpensive. Maybe we send a friendly reminder out that way and just state, you know, the concerns that we have. So that's an idea too, but I think.
Do we have a lot of them in the city? I don't see a lot.
We don't know how, how do we know?
I know we have, I know we have some.
Twenty to fifty, I guess, I don't really.
What's, is this gonna be something that's enforced?
As soon as you see what's detracting, what's detracting of it, you send out a letter and it doesn't happen.
But at least that way, if we're gonna be enforcing an ordinance or enforcing a code, we contacted, we didn't just put it in the record, we didn't just say it in the council meetings. They need to be physically notified.
Yeah, I don't wanna just arbitrarily go around and start finding people by ordinance or ordinance, education, or first them, make sure they're aware of.
It's more so just a common courtesy slash common sense thing.
Right.
By your first response. How it's not on your residence, it would be smart for you to get it on there.
Yeah, it would be.
It's emergency services that are basically who's gonna benefit.
And, and that's why I brought up the, just the friendly reminder that, hey, we're not, you know, calling the order, I think it's just more so, please have a number on your.
Maybe Terry can help us out with that, uh, a little bit. Just a little.
Great, please.
All right, thanks. Um, next item we have is Scott prepared a resolution, um, and that is for Green Step City.
Green Step City, yes.
I guess I have a couple of questions. I know that this is not mandatory the way I, I read through this.
No, it is not. What it is, it's more so recognition for our city, um, in, in ways that we are trying to prevent things and being a more green city is what it, what it is entitling. Um, as far as the resolution, it's just a general resolution that we, we went off of from other cities. And the resolution is just kind of a starting point for us to fall into the categories of, I mean, there's a number of categories. Bob's got LED lights and, and the street poles, um, you know, we're using energy insights and we just want tablets. There's so many things that fall into the category and why not label our town with that title, Green City, along with other cities that are following our steps?
I, I, I like the aspect of it, um, and I think it, it's important that we all recognize that, you know, renewable energy and things of that nature is something that we're gonna have to, you know, everybody's gonna have to do with it at some point in time. One of the things that, I guess I'm not overly crazy about just reading through this resolution and knowing that it's not mandatory, but I, I just wanna, you know, make issue to some of this verbiage in here. The state's energy conservation goal of achieving annual energy savings of one twenty-five percent of the annual retail energy sales of electricity and natural gas. I, I think that, I think that's all good, um, and it kinda leads me to the next one. Establishes energy policies, goal per capita of use of its fuel and energy input reduction by fifteen percent. It's got, basically, it's got the mandates of what they plan on doing through twenty twenty-five.
Already, yes.
In place.
These are pretty much the guidelines of what we're using in Energy Insights for right now.
Right. One, one of the problems that I have with this and, and, like I said, I, I don't have any problem with renewables and things of that nature. I think it's a, it's a good thing. I just don't want this to look like it's, that we're condoning the high energy costs and bills of the renewable energies. And it, it's gotten to the point ridiculous as to where we have to raise our energy rates ten percent to pay for state mandated renewable energies with no end in sight to the cost. We've got senior citizens, we've got people who are on fixed income, we've got businesses and just regular working class people. I don't know how they're gonna afford this and I've been talking with, with some of our state elected officials about this. Um, and it, it's a big concern, you know, so I just don't want this to look like a statistic somewhere down the line that says, hey, everybody's good with this, everybody.
No, and this is, there's so many steps to this that we don't have to, um, I wanna say out of like thirty steps, we only have to follow in the five or six categories. So there's, there's things that aren't going, going to apply to our smaller city versus bigger cities that are, that are gonna be more.
Yeah.
I guess.
No, and I understand it's not, it's not mandatory.
No.
I, I understand that end of it, but I, I just don't want this, like I said, to go down as a, as a statistic item that somebody's looking at saying, hey, look at all these, everybody's going along with this, it's a great thing. Renewables are great, but until they can figure out an affordable way to do it, I don't know how people are gonna afford it.
In regards to, um, the one point five percent in interest, we are, we are saving our residents money that way. Our goal from Energy Insights is to provide our customers throughout the city with, with rebates. And, you know, it's, they're more energy efficient, so it's more the city that's taking the toll and the residents are saving money by their cost per month and, you know, the energy efficiency and they're giving them rebates.
The gap is so far between what they're saving and what the renewables are costing. It, it's ridiculous to even talk about that number spread, you know? I, I mean, I understand it and I think, I think it's a good thing, but like I said, I just don't want it to go down.
And, and we don't have to do this. Now, remember, I did bring this up a while back and, and this is to the point where I am with it. And we don't have to become a green city. There's no, this is something that I brought.
No, I, I like everything in it and I, I mean that I've, I've read up to this point. Like I said, I just don't want this to go down as some type of approval statistic that the state or somebody else is gonna use to say, we approve of everything because the cost doesn't equal benefits right now.
Why don't you let me, uh, make some changes on this resolution and we'll bring it up.
No, I just, the resolution, fine, Scott. I, I certainly don't see any problems with it. It's basically recognizing how this stopped, you know?
It.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, um, that's not, our, our intentions aren't really, like I said, the purpose of this is for people looking at places to travel, people looking at places to live and things like that, to bring people into our community. They see us as a green step city. They see us as following those roles.
I mean, we, we were already working on that, you know?
And, and my intentions of this is to bring people into our city as that green friendly city. So that's the intention. That's the, the revenue intention of that. So it, and if there's change, then needing to be made to it, though, I.
I, I read through the resolution. I mean, it's, it's basically all, you know, laid out by the state. If there are green cities, Best Practices Act, um, I'm not sure what the city's V three benchmarking database.
That is.
It's just a place where you can go to track our usage and suffer.
That's our, our title. Uh, where we, what category we fall into as a city? There's like B one, two and three.
As of right now, yes.
It, it has to do with size, how much we're already doing, things like that.
What's the, what's the benefit, Scott, after, after a city is labeled a green step city? I mean, is there ramps that, that are gonna be out there that you're gonna, they're gonna look at that city in particular?
There was a certain percentage, um, there was, I, I can't remember the percentage. We just talked about it last week. But there was X amount of cities that filed for grants, um, and out of the total of cities that actually got the grants, I don't know what percentage it was, all of them were a green step city versus others that weren't, that did not qualify for the grant.
So I think the concept of going green is, is, is great. I mean, I certainly don't have an issue with it. I, I think it's all good. It's just the energy savings thing that, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Because we're the ones, we're, we're losing money on it.
Yeah.
Especially with energy.
Well, not only, you know, the rebate program, which is, it is, you know, the state would like us to do. It's just the cost that is passed on to consumer from the state mandated electrical renewables that, that are killing us. I don't know how much more people can afford to pay. And trust me, every time we hit one of these thresholds that are laid out on here, you're gonna see bigger, heavier price increases. I'll guarantee it. It will happen. And we're not done with the, with the huge increases as far as electrical costs.
And truthfully, we, uh, we pretty much fit all the categories of a green step city here. As far as, as qualifying, like I said, the number of things that Bob has out on the streets.
Well, it's probably LED lighting.
The lighting and, and different, I mean, there's just a whole bunch of things that we qualify ready for that we, we are a long ways in the process of doing it. It's just, and it's very minimal time consuming.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see, and I would say there's probably a huge savings from what we're lighting with now versus the LED. I, I would say that'd be a huge savings for us as a community and a city, you know? That's why I don't have a problem with, with this. It's just, I wanna make certain that, you know, bypassing this resolution, like I said, just not giving approval or saying that, at least for me, that, that I'm not okay with what things are going. So we, do we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve resolutions zero nine zero eight two zero one four dash one.
A motion on the floor by Matt. Can you get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you for listening, Brandon. Printer copier donation. What do you got, Mike, Scotty?
Well, as we spoke, um, we were getting very minimal amount for our printer as a copier, um, or printer copier when we approved the new one, um, so we held the old one back. It still functions just fine. Um, it's just that it needs a lot of TLC, obviously, but it still works. I think for the amount that we could get for it, we could get a lot more out of it by potentially donating it to maybe a, you know, a nonprofit or some, or some, or in our community that could benefit from it, um, because obviously those things are not cheap. And I, I just was kinda trying to gather some thoughts and seeing what we could do with it.
Sure.
Um, even the fire department or.
Does Robert Daniel or anybody need one?
It.
I make a few copies. I just come up here and use this one.
And Bob would more parts actually using this, yeah, so the fire department.
The fire department needs this one, will it hurt or is it okay?
I've never used it.
One was brought up, was Holy Trinity, if they could use one. Um, that was the thought.
Call up your screw reason or something along that line.
Yeah, something, like I said, maybe it's, it was not a cheap machine.
Or church or whatever, you know, might be.
What we're getting for it, it's not even worth. Well, let's talk to Brian or Todd, see if, if the fire department can utilize it. If not, leave it open. I mean, uh, get it out in the information. Somebody that maybe wants it can approach you, Scott, come to the city all. If there's thoughts in the meantime, please bring them forward to me if there's a.
Very good. Uh, we got some gambling permits. We have three of those, or either on or for Holy Trinity.
They all pretty much look the same, but they are three different dates.
Three different events.
Yes, three different events. Two locations are the same and one location off.
Yeah, we have a total of three raffles and one will be pull tab paddle wheels and bingo.
Do we need three separate motions or are we done? Yeah. And if you want to identify those by date, yeah, how many guys make your motions?
Uh, I will make a motion that we approve gambling permit for Holy Trinity for October eleventh. That one, I believe, is the wine, the state of wine dinner.
Is that what that is?
For our month.
Motion on the floor to approve the October eleventh.
I would second that motion.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next one?
I make a motion, we approve the Holy Trinity, December twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen gambling permit. I think that's their annual calendar.
Okay, motion on the floor by Steph to approve?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next one?
I make a motion, we approve their March eighth, two thousand and fifteen, um, and that's the bingo raffle, paddle wheels, pull tabs. That's their carnival.
Carnival. Motion on the floor by Stephanie. Can you get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Catch that on there.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a building permit or two to approve?
Just have one for the school district for a greenhouse.
Okay, everything was okay with the building though?
Yeah. Still have to go through a building inspector for, for his stuff on it.
Yep.
Right outside the retention pond.
Okay.
So it's a tennis court retention pond and then it'll be this greenhouse.
It's kind of, uh, it's like it's FFA or something like that. Kind of, uh, it's like it's FFA or something along that way. Okay. Can you get a motion to approve the greenhouse?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Steph.
Second.
Second by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, and that is, like you said, done, um, with approval of our, uh, bill of business.
Yep.
Uh, next we have some department reports. Uh, Bobby Yoe, Public Works.
Solicited some bids for concrete, replacing sidewalk around town, various locations. Um, the whole bid was girths concrete, amount of two thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents. So I think I approve that.
Just various blocks around town?
Yeah, I go out on a survey every other year, I'll do all the sidewalks and.
We'll get a motion on the floor to.
Is this, uh, do the residents have to pay half on this? Do we notify them?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll notify them in writing and then they pay half.
The cost. Yep. Like, yeah, that's our policy.
Are these just like individual sections, Bob? You're talking like, what's the biggest run of sidewalk, like fifty feet, sixty, seventy?
Yeah, eighty-seven square feet, so five by four, twenty feet.
Could be a good strong, I think it's.
Other big sections.
A lot of it's just, yeah, it's not cut and repaired in every place.
Yep.
I make a motion, we go ahead and approve the concrete work that girts.
Motion on the floor by.
Twenty-nine, fifty.
Twenty-nine, twenty, fifty.
Twenty-nine, twenty, fifty.
And a second.
Second by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
The mosquito spraying, um, I did spray a week ago, didn't seem to do much good. They're back in a vengeance now, but I got it scheduled for tomorrow night, so we'll see what the weather does, but.
So I wish you could be getting that stretch of bad weather coming.
It's gonna rain and get cold with this kinda weather.
Yeah.
So it might be the end or might not, but.
Thursday nights must get pretty cold.
Yeah, that might be the end of them. Usually it's Labor Day, but.
Yeah. Yeah. What are you gonna do? And water sitting in places that I've never seen water sit before.
Yeah, we did a tree class today, a tree inspector certification, bring her, it was a really good timing, they had, um, that windstorm up there Thursday morning on the college campus, they had fourteen trees go down, so they actually left them for us to kinda walk through and study and why they go down and a lot of it's the plantings, they're planted too deeply and roots get, actually get collared around the stem and choke the tree out, so.
Those are really interesting.
Really good training.
About that, you enjoyed it.
Yeah, very educational.
Good.
So, we don't do a lot of bollard plantings, but just good narrow bollards, but.
What, do, do we recommend or do we allow people to still plant trees in the bollard? I mean, what kind of hectic does that raise generally on the curb gutters?
Really, city by city, I mean, like the city of, some cities will say we care more about the trees on the sidewalk and they'll plant trees and just deal with the sidewalks later. You know, they'll ramp up the sidewalks, so they'll do cutting on the sidewalks, but you know, it's kind of a trade-off if you want straight sidewalks or if you want trees. Certain varieties, smaller varieties will be better on the sidewalks as far as eating on the bollards.
I know, I went through that with Bob when I planted those two in my front yard, we kinda talked about where we're gonna put them, 'cause I don't have a sidewalk in front. So if there was ever one to be designed there and what kinda trees, we had talked about and things like that, so.
Oh, yeah, they've got some really good literature out there and if anybody's interested, yeah, some literature, yeah.
How did everything, go ahead.